I will call to order tonight's regular schedule, monthly council meeting for the city of Malden on Tuesday, January the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at approximately seven P. M. Let the records reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Ms. King, who she wanted me to let everyone know that she was not here due to a personal family medical reason, not COVID. So she is attending to her family, so our prayers and thoughts are with her. We welcome you tonight. Thank you for coming out. I know it can be kind of a trying situation for us native-born Southern people to drive in the less-than-ideal sunshine weather, and it's not sand. So we do appreciate you being out tonight, and by all means, be careful and be safe. And we will try to move this along tonight, expeditiously as possible, prior to the weather drop and blow freezing and starting to create an additional situation. Also, let the records reflect that our city minister, Mr. Madden, is here, along with our city clerk, Ms. Miller, our legal counsel, Mr. Hughes, along with various department heads, chief of police, chief of fire, the others via Zoom, I believe. So we welcome that. And again, we wish everyone to stay as safe as possible, and we'll get through tonight's agenda as we can. First order of business will be our invocation, our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Mattany?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask anybody who would like to bow to do so at this time. Gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful to be able to get together this night and do the business of the city. Lord, we ask that you be with us, give us wisdom as we deal with the issues before us, and we continue working to build a city that works, lives, plays in ways that are pleasing in your sight, Lord. We would ask that you be with those who are not here, those who are dealing with medical situations, COVID or otherwise, and we ask that you be with those who have unspoken prayer requests. Lord, you know what they are. These things we ask in your name. I'm in. At this time, I'd ask all who would like to stand for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever to be judged as one.
Thank you, Mr. Mattany. Next item on our agenda is a proclamation. It's always an honor and privilege to read and sign various proclamations for our city. Let me read this one for you. Proclamation, whereas all children in Malden should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Malden recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students in Malden to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Malden, and whereas Malden is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhance the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Malden has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, I, Terry Merritt, do hereby recognize January the twenty-third through the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-two as Malden School Choice Week, and I call this observation to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the reading approval of minutes, our city council meeting of December the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Pleasure of the council.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Reynolds. Is there any discussion, corrections, deletions, clarifications needed? You're none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none, and it's our approved six-zero. Special call council meeting, January third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move for approval.
Have a motion to second.
Second.
Second in stereo from Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Crayton. Any discussions, clarifications? All those, you're none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. And it's our approved, as submitted, six-zero. Special call council meeting, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Pleasure of council.
For approval.
Second.
All right, we flipped it. Mr. Reynolds makes the motion, the second from Mr. Mattany. Any discussions? You're none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries minutes, as approved, six-zero. Now, let's pause for a moment, and I'll try to be brief. On tonight's agenda, if you send it, there is two public comment sections allowed. The first public comment section we're getting to right now is for any item on the agenda that you signed up to speak. All right, so and it's various items on the agenda. I won't go over that with you, but it's on the agenda. That's where you would want to speak right now. We'll limit this to three minutes. If there are multiple people wanting to speak on the same issue, I would say if you're repeating something, just say ditto to what he said, or same as he said, and we'll move on. But if you need to clarification or add something, feel free to do that. There's your three minutes. Your comments are directed to the chair, me, and all councils to listen. It is not a discord. It is not a question-and-answer session. We will hear your comments, but we will not respond back to those unless there's a need for clarification. So those are the rules of two thousand and five that we go by. So with that being said, our first public comment section tonight, and our first signee is Tracy. Tracy, all right, Tracy, would you come to the mic and state your name and address? And is that mic on? Okay, that mic is on, so you're good to speak into that. I want to pull it down a little bit. Oh, Keith's going to do that for you.
So thank you all for allowing us to speak this afternoon. My commentary is about the speed bumps. Thank you, Brandon, for that clarification distinction, that are being proposed on the Forrester Creek subdivision. I just found about this recently. I did not know that this had been proposed, and I am very passionately, at this point in time, against it. And I'd like to better understand, and I understand this is just for comments, how we can bring this back to the HOA, if we could take it back and have that discussion and vote. I really don't feel they're appropriate for our subdivision. We're very small. I don't think they would be of benefit. My understanding of public safety review in our subdivision indicated there was not a problem. And I think, last but not least, it, to me, it is, I've never had an issue. I've been there since two thousand and twelve. I'm not the most tenured in the subdivision. I'm certainly not the newest. I walked my dog there repeatedly, and I've not had any problem. And I think it's extremely sad, as one of our other HOA neighbors have made the distinction, that one or two families in the neighborhood are bringing us to this. That's a shame. I don't feel bullies should rule, and I don't think they're needed in our subdivision. And that's my feeling. I would like to understand in the, how we could take, again, back to the HOA and figure out this on our own.
Tracy, if you would, state your name and your street address, please.
Sure. It's Tracy Gassom, and it's two oh nine Forrester Creek Way.
Thank you. Next is Kim Roberts. Same routine, state your name and your address, if you would please, for the records.
Thank you. My name is Kim Roberts. I live at one twenty-one Forrester Creek Drive. I'm also speaking on the same issue. I am one of the neighbors in the development that did sign. I believe our petition has thirty-five homes on it, which is like a sixty-six percent rate that people want. So there obviously was a lot of concern. I live at the second, if you're coming in, I call it a little three-way intersection. My husband works from home. I'm home a lot too with my, through the day with my job. So I do see the need. I've had a lot of people who kind of have two issues. We have some folks in the neighborhood who go too fast around our corners. We have stop signs there, but they seem to be nonexistent for a lot of folks. And we have a lot of children in the neighborhood now. We have people walk their dogs, or just people who walk in general. I've watched neighbors in my neighborhood speed around those corners without a halt. And also, being on the first street as you come in, we have a sign that says it's a no-throughway, but a lot of people don't get that, and they drive down. By the time they realize that they are at a dead end, you know, we have one way in, one way out, they get very frustrated. They whip around in my driveway area, or down at the court, and zoom up out of the neighborhood. I've watched that several times. I've had to put little flags on my little driveway so they don't keep running up into my curb on my driveway. So I do see the need. I know we have some folks that are against it, but I just, just for safety, would like to find us a way to work through this, to protect our neighborhood, protect us, and, but still make, try to make people okay with it. So that's my big concern. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Roberts. Next is Ms. Cindy Abar.
I'm also a homeowner near Forrester Creek. I did sign for the petition, but at this point, more information that I would like. The petition stated some things. More things seem to be coming to light on next door, and as a homeowner, it's just not really clear exactly how many speed bumps, signs, and things of that nature. So as a homeowner, I think it would just be important that we really know what we're signing for. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
If you would state your name and your street address, please, for the records.
Cindy Abair, one oh nine Forrester Creek Drive.
Thank you. And Steve Abar.
Eva Bear, one oh nine Forrester Creek Drive. Pretty much ditto what Cindy had to say. We just want to have a safe neighborhood, and it's just a question of how many of these speed bumps, where they're going to be. As homeowners, we just want to know a little bit more information so that, so that we know what the next steps are. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Keith. Pardon? Name and state your address, please.
I'm Keith Harden. I live at one oh seven Forrester Creek Drive. I'm the person that circulated the petition, following process, the way I understood it, that it the, a solution to the speeding that I see in front of my house, mostly on a daily basis, particularly since I retired in twenty, at the end of two thousand and twenty, and through most of two thousand and twenty, I worked from home. It was, became more visible to me, that something I would like to see because of children in the neighborhood, pets, walkers. Now, I'm one of several people who seem to keep grandchildren, or a grandchild, some of the time. I guess the thing is, we have to get the petition moved forward to find out what the speed bump solution would be. The comment on, it really was not a homeowner, homeowners' Association action. It's my action to circulate the petition. It seemed to have a lot of support. I know there's a lot of questions and the unknown now, so I'm not exactly sure what the next step in the process, or how we should be handling this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's all the speakers we had signed up for our agenda items. So we will now move on to our report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Mayor, members of our city council, I do not have a report, but I do want to take a moment and thank the fire department, police department, and Public Works for their work over this past weekend with the, with the winter weather that we received. They were made themselves available throughout the weekend, putting down salt, moving trees out of the roadway, and just responding to the routine calls for service. So I want to take a moment to thank them.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Okay, a report from standing committees, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance and Policy Committee met at its regular time. There were no major action items coming out of it. It was mostly as an opportunity to get an update from staff on where the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three budget is in preparation stage. So we had a chance to do that. Just a general update, we're about halfway through this year's budget and expenditures. The department heads have done a fantastic job of keeping expenditures low, so all major budgets are below where they should be at this time, and we should start seeing our income increase as the first of the year arrives. That's when the ad政 taxes start coming in, so we'll see the revenue side of our budgets looking a little better over the next few months. That's all I have from Finance and Policy, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public Safety, Ms. King is not here. I'm sure she would want to say, though, our, also our thanks to our Public Safety, Fire Department and Police Department for the great job, especially right now with the white stuff laying out there and the slow, that will slow some of our response down. So thank you for all this great job that you guys do, and for Judicial for continuing to keep us safe. And I know she's probably online, so thank you for her also. Public Works, Mr. Crayton?
I don't have anything to report, but I would also like to basically say ditto, as far as Public Works, helping keep the streets as good as they have. Still getting the trash this morning with the ice. I'd give them the kudos for that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crayton. Ignorant Plan Development, Mr. Mattany?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Building Coes, Mr. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had seven new business openings in December, and I'd like to report that permits and inspections were up in two thousand and twenty-one. City is growing.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Our newest member, Chair of Recreation, Mr. Allgood.
We have not met yet, so there's no report.
Thank you, sir. We're breaking you in easy.
The report.
Okay, tonight, we move on to unfinished business. Ordinances on second reading. Ms. Miller?
Property consisting of approximately point five acres located at three zero one East Butler Road, and this is the property across the street from the intersection at Bethel and Butler.
This comes to us from BDS, so Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is also requesting rezoning from R twelve to C two, and so I would like to make a motion to approve this on second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Mattany, is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Allgood?
Is this a, a new builder? Are they taking over that existing home? Isn't there a home on the property?
Yes, there, and he owns that home. He is converting it from a home to a business office, and he'd like to convert it to commercial, and I think we're all aware of, as part of the DOT endeavor on East Butler also, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Allgood. Hopefully I explained. I didn't mean to jump ahead of you, Ms. Kuzner. Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From my recollection, this was seven zero last time, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You're none of all those in favor of the motion to rezone the truck of property on three oh one East Butler Road from R twelve to C two, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? You're none, the motion carries six-zero. Thank you. Next item, Ms. Miller.
Next is an amendment to Section three, twelve point three point eight of the Malden zoning ordinance to provide a description of moving trucks and trailers.
Okay, also from BDS, Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the city amended the zoning ordinance, which included a provision that existing trailer rental activities and operations not in the S one district must cease no later than December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. What is before us tonight is a proposed amendment, which clarifies the meaning of trucks and trailers, and that the sunset provisions do not apply to car rental services which rent pickup trucks and other vehicles primarily used for personal transportation instead of transporting goods, and shall not apply to the temporary use of storage containers as otherwise allowed by the Malden zoning ordinance. That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve this on second reading.
Okay, if a motion, Ms. Kuzner, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Mattany, is there any discussion? You're none of those in favor of the motion to amend the intent of the sunset provision pertaining to the operation of trailer rentals outside the S one district, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign? You're none, the motion carries six-zero. If we, that moves us into new business, that would, Ms. Miller?
There are two ordinances for first reading. First is an ordinance to amend Article one of Chapter thirty-four, the solid waste management of the City of Malden Code of Ordinances, to require contractors to haul off leaves from contracted landscape jobs.
I think this has come from Public Works. Mr. Crayton?
Yes. There's been some additional information and discussion, and at this time, I'd actually like to make a motion to send this back to committee for further discussion and review.
Okay, I have a motion to refer this back to Public Works Standing Committee for further input and review. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a sec for Mr. Reynolds. Is there any discussion? You're none of those in favor of the motion to send back to the Public Works Committee for further information and vetting, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? You're none, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Crayton. Ms. Reynolds, uh, Ms. Miller?
Next is an ordinance amending Chapter thirty-eight of the City of Malden Code of Ordinances to add a new article regulating the operation of certain trucks on designated streets in the city and other matters related there.
Okay, this is coming out of Public Safety. Ms. King is not here with another member of the committee, like to offer that for council's consideration.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the Chapter thirty-eight of the City Malden Codes and Ordinances. At this time, make that motion to amend that. This essentially is referring to the, if I remember correctly, the trucks going down Hamby Road. There's an issue with that right now. And so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to make this amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crayton. There is a motion to amend our ordinance prohibiting through trucks on Hamby Road. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a sec for Ms. Kuzner. Is any discussion? Ms. Kuzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to confirm that this, this is not going to prevent, like, allied van lines and moving vehicles, moving, big, moving semis that may come into neighborhoods to help people move their whole house.
This, this, this is a, this ordinance is for just driving through, if you have business, like a moving van or delivery in those areas, that does not, that's not included in this. This is for passing through Hamby. One of the primary reasons is the intersection with Miller Road and driving through the grass, not being able to make the turns. There's some problems with trucks in that area, and that's what this is about. This is, these are semi trucks. These are not, you know, you're talking three-axle trucks plus trailer.
Right, and I understand that, but personally, when we moved to Germany, we had semis come down Noelwood, and I just want to make sure that that is clear in the ordinance, that it doesn't pertain to service vehicles coming into the neighborhood, that it only pertains to the semis that are delivering goods to businesses and cutting through down Hamby, which is kind of dangerous.
Can I ask that question specifically in committee? They verified that, that it's not, that it doesn't apply to those vehicles.
Okay, and is it, is it in this ordinance that way?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Kuzner, I could direct you to, if you look at the ordinance, it clarifies that for delivery vehicles, like trucks that are coming through, that they're, they're completely excluded. As long as you have a purpose for going, you can go through. But if you don't, other than just to cut through to get to Miller Road or Forrester Drive, then you cannot cut through Hamby Drive.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this an ordinance that already exists and we're adding Hamby to it, or is this the first instance of this ordinance?
No, Mr. Allgood, it's not the first instance. The reason why the city has to approve an ordinance is because Hamby Drive is a state-owned road, and their policy requires any time, no, no through truck sign is placed on a state road, the council of that entity has to pass ordinance.
Mr. Hughes?
But, Mr. Hughes, I hate to cut you off. If you could just use the microphone so everyone can hear. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add to the discussion, since I drafted this ordinance regarding Ms. Kuzner's concerns, there are definitions that protect the situations that you're dealing with. Their, the trucks are defined as with more than six wheels. Does not apply to delivery trucks such as UPS or FedEx, or with dual-wheel pickup trucks. Furthermore, under Section thirty-eight, one seventy-three, this article does not prohibit the operation of truck making pickups, deliveries, or which shall have other specific business to a location or a designated route, as long as the driver can show proof of said he has their own business. So the police department will have to be educated on what this ordinance says. And I would also like to add that I carved out a section in here that if, for SEDOT roadways, if, if council determines that they want to add additional no-through signs on the other roads that are owned and maintained by SEDOT, council can do so by resolution and add to Section thirty-eight, one seventy-three on an ongoing basis.
I got a note. Can I add state DOT roads via resolution in the future? Thank you, sir. I do appreciate the phraseology in there for those of us who drive dual-wheel pickup trucks. Some call them dualies, others call them pickup trucks with training wheels. I drive one of those. So thank you. I appreciate that being in there. Any other comments? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, as I think through this, is there anything on the city's behalf that we should be reaching out to, you may recognize MapQuest. You ever heard of MapQuest, Mr. Mayor? That how you, never mind, iPhone Maps or anything like that? Is there anything we need to reach out to them to give them the notification for this being a no-through traffic at that point?
We certainly can reach. I think that it automatically updates, but we'll, we'll make sure that it's clear on, on those mapping devices.
Well, and that's what I'm asking. So is that, is that incumbent on us to update them, or is that something that's done through SEDOT?
It's normally done through, through wherever they put It's normally done through, through wherever they pull their maps from.
Okay.
It's a state road, so it should automatically, I think.
Okay. Fair enough.
I would think so, but we can double check. And if not, uh, I'll write it back and let council know.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that also on Google Maps? In GIS, I do that one too.
You don't print your maps?
I didn't say that.
In the direction, don't I mean?
I know the word is out because if you come down Forester before you bear right on to Hamby, they put concrete barriers up where that was swinging out and they were making their, uh, it's at a hundred and eighty or three sixty turn. It's a hundred and eighty. Go back out Forester Drive, so we, we see that coming. That was a good one. I appreciate the levity there, Mr. Reynolds. Any other comments? Educational comments, any others? Hear none, all those in favor of the ordinance prohibiting through truck traffic on Hamby Road, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries six zero. Next item, Ms. Miller.
The resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Malden and East Butler Investments LLC for parking accommodations for the planned multi-use development vis a vis Maverick Station.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I look forward to this one since he's been baited. Mr. Matney, for economic development.
Move we approve the resolution.
I have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a sec for Mr. Crayling. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the memorandum? Whoops, Ms. Kuzner.
You looked away too fast, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think that I brought this up in committee, but I just wanted to also state it in, um, council. Just want to make sure that when we do have meetings, uh, committee, council, special called, that we will have a place to park. And, and, and the police, when they park in the back, that they also have a place.
Turn your mic on there, Mr. Crayling. Your mic.
Uh, Mr. Madden, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did update. We now have the blue lines are not included on that map that are for police, and it's behind the council, behind the meeting, uh, on the building here. And then we also discussed that because most of our meetings are on Monday nights, those would not be high priority nights for, uh, for their use. So it shouldn't be an issue. But we did, they didn't, they, they knocked out a big blue, the blue lined area is now not part of this agreement.
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Crayling, it, um, thanks page thirty three. If you look at, uh, in the actual agreement, I mean memorandum of understanding, if you look at, uh, section two, there's a provision, the last sentence in that section, right to restrict, that, uh, ensures that on the first and third Mondays of each month, that there'll be, uh, access for parking for the meetings. And then, uh, on number three, reserved spaces, it references an attachment, that has a outlined in blue that's reserved for police vehicles.
Okay, so on, on, um, times when we actually have to meet on a Tuesday, they're given forty-eight hours notice that we'll be meeting and we'll need parking.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hear none, all those in favor of memorandum of understanding of parking at City Hall, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries six zero. Ms. Miller, you.
Council is requested to approve an agreement to provide technical assistance to the city for environmental services for brownfield environmental site assessment and related activities.
Also coming from economic development, Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. Move we approve the agreement with Terracom, uh, for the environmental services to be funded with the brownfield grant on the EPA.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Crayling, is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to approval of an agreement with Terracom to provide technical assistance to the city for environmental services for brownfield environmental site assessment related activities, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries six zero. Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to approve a resolution to certify property at and adjacent to One Jenkins Street as an abandoned textile mill site.
Also from economic development, Mr. Matney.
Move we approve the resolution certifying One Jenkins Street as an abandoned textile mill site.
Thank you, Mr. Matney. Is there a second?
Second.
Tech for Mr. Crayling. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds?
Just that there is no fiscal impact for this.
Was that a question or a statement?
Oh, a statement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Statement, okay. Got it? Any other questions? Hear none, all those in favor of approval of resolution certify property at and adjacent to One Jenkins Street as an abandoned textile mill site, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries. To Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to approve the utility easement with East Butler Investments LLC guarding Maverick Station.
Sorry about that. Okay, also from economic development, Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. Move we approve the utility easement with East Butler Investments LLC.
Yeah, for motion, Mr. Matney, is there a second?
Second.
Have a sec for Mr. Crayling, is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of, uh, the approval of utility easement with East Butler Investments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries six zero. Okay, gee, Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to approve funding in the amount of ten thousand dollars to cover the costs associated with repairs to the roof of Cultural Center.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also from economic development, Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we approve funding in the amount of ten thousand dollars to cover the costs associated with repairs of the roof of the Cultural Center, coming from H and A.
Okay, for motion from Mr. Matney, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Crayling. Let me get caught up here right here. All right. Any discussion? Mr. Crayling.
Just a question. So this is after our review of the roof with the, uh, contractors, and that's what we came up with. That was the, we could tell the cost.
Yes, uh, that's correct. Um, Public Works, uh, had a roof contractor to come out and provide an assessment to look at the entire roof and identify the repairs. So rather than replace the entire roof, just making repairs should address the issue.
Very good, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on those repairs, were those repairs that needed to be made because of the previous roofing contractor? Or are these just wear and tear repairs?
From the assessment that I reviewed and that Public Works reviewed, uh, uh, mainly wear and tear, there are some areas that may have been, could have been done better. But it's out of warranty, and I think it was almost a ten years, uh, so.
Okay. That's all, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the approved funding in the amount of ten thousand dollars to cover the costs associated with repairs to the roof of the Cultural Center, funding from H and A, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries six zero. Okay, I believe we are now at H. Ms. Miller.
The resolution to approve a contract with Sealy Construction to serve as construction manager for the design construction of an entryway, a multi-use trail that will connect to the pedestrian road sign.
I believe this comes from PW. Mr. Crayling?
This, this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Sealy Construction, uh, for the work stated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crayling. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the approval of the resolution, approve a contract with Sealy Construction to serve as construction manager for design construction of the entryway for the multi-use trail that will connect to the pedestrian, so three eighty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries. Get you on my notes here. Okay, I believe we are to, I, Ms. Miller.
Authorization is requested to approve an upgrade to the fifteen inch sewer line at the Bridgeway Station pedestrian bridge.
That's yours. Okay, this is also coming out of Public Works, Mr. Crayling.
Okay, uh, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sewer line upgrade, the option two, uh, cost of one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Crayling. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second for Ms. Kuzner. Is there any discussion? Mr. Crayling?
Mr., is he online? If he could just kind of explain to the council what this is referring to and so we're all clear.
All right. So, uh, the resolution proposed is to address sewer line issue in the vicinity of the, uh, the walking bridge, the proposed walking bridge to Bridgeway Station. The current pipe is about sixteen feet below ground. They need to raise the ground about twenty feet, uh, which would put the sewer pipe at approximately a depth of thirty-seven feet, which far exceeds the capabilities of the pipe material. So what we're proposing is to, to excavate and to lay new pipe inside of a steel casing to ensure that, you know, we, we don't collapse the sewer pipe underneath the new walking bridge and that the new walking bridge can be constructed without any, um, interference with our sewer, a capability of provide sewer.
In addition to this, is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fleman, so also make this, um, repairable in the future. If there is a ca, a problem, we can slide out, um, damaged PVC or anything in beside there and repair it without having to tear down the bridge or the footings, correct?
That is correct. When, when you, when you lay a pipe inside of a casing pipe, it's a, it's a pipe inside of a pipe that's, uh, that can basically be slipped out either side. So it's reinforced by steel and it's serviceable.
Which is the reason why option two is better than option one.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Crayling, uh, Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Fleman, will this be done in-house or will this be Frazier Engineering?
We will, we will con, uh, we will work with Frazier Engineering, and we'll, uh, solicit bids to have a contractor do the work.
And does the estimation of a hundred thousand cover that or?
Yes. These are numbers that were generated, uh, I worked with Mr. Fra, Aaron Frazier to, uh, to generate these figures.
Perfect, thank you. What I wanted to make sure of is once approved, if they came back more than that, we wouldn't have to have this come back to council and slow down the process. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. There is also funding in the sewer budget to cover this as well, Mr. Mayor. And that's a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Good point, clarification. Did, was your motion up to one hundred thousand or the old famous not to exceed one hundred thousand?
Let's make that not to exceed one hundred thousand.
Well, I thought I understood it too. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Matney?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and this is a Mr. Madden question. Does this impact the construction start time for the pedestrian bridge? Are we still looking at the end of February for the beginning of construction?
It should not, Mr. Matney. Um, as I understand it, this, this repair will take about four, four weeks. And from the bridge contractor, they're looking to start construction on the bridge in, in March.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Madden. Any other questions? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to approve an upgrade to the fifteen inch sewer line to Bridgeway Station pedestrian bridge, utilize an option two with a not to exceed one hundred thousand dollar cost, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Miller, the next item?
Council is requested to approve a new part-time administrative judge.
Okay, this is coming from public safety. Normally, Ms. King is another member of public safety, wish to take that. All right, Mr. Crayling.
Uh, Mayor, move that we approve the appointment of Sierra Howard as part-time administrative judge and the, uh, twenty-two hundred dollars associated for mandatory judge school.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Crayling, is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of approving the new part-time judge? Just lost her name.
Sierra Howard.
Sierra Howard, the department administrator of and the associated cost for the mandatory judge school. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, motion carries six zero. Ms. Miller. Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. I, um, upon communication with Ms. King, she had asked me to make the following statement. She requests, this is the next step. So the calming, uh, traffic calming for Forester Creek Drive, Forester Creek Way, she's requested council and our other committee members to consider sending this back to committee for further vetting, and she would also like to have a public input session with the residents of, uh, Forester Creek. So, uh, if it be the pleasure of council, I'm open to a motion to, uh, that her request to send it back to committee. Was council's pleasure. Mr. Crayling?
This time, I'd like to make a motion to send this, uh, item back to committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Which, didn't catch, ah, Mr. Allgood, thank you, sir. Okay, there's the motion and a second to return this item to, uh, the, uh, public safety committee with the caveat that there would be a public input session with the residents of Forester Creek to, uh, further explain the entire process, the pros and cons of the de-traffic calming, uh, environment with, as we all finally got an education from our chief, Miller, utilizing traffic humps. Okay, there's a big difference between a hump and a bump, and we covered that pretty good in the committee meeting, I believe. We appreciate that clarification. Any other discussion? Mr. Crayling?
Just want to make clear, this is not in this. This just sends it back to committee and giving time for everyone to be informed where they're gonna, you know, idea where they're gonna go, what the impact is, the good and the bad. Uh, our neighborhood I come from, we've had some good things that come from the humps that we added, but also we've had some negatives. Making sure everybody's aware of it, everybody's, it's out in the open. That's what we're doing here. We're not stopping it. We're not going forward, we're just sending it back so everyone's informed. That's, that's the goal of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crayling. Any other discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion? Oh, Mr. Allgood, sorry.
That's quite all right. I was just going to somewhat echo what Mr. Crayling said. Uh, part of what is in the written document is a recommendation for a community meeting. It's not required, but is a recommendation, and I think that this will allow a time for that to possibly happen.
Good clarification. Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Anyone else? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to return this to public safety committee with the caveat of the public input session getting help soon, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion cares, we'll return it to committee. Next item on their agenda, Ms. Miller, I'll take this. This, uh, we've kind of went back and forth with this, uh, on the proper way to do that. And basically, and I couldn't find my clarification from our legal counsel, so I want Mr. Hughes to ask his input there. So I'd ask council to consider item I, the resolution regarding project kick, be considered informally via the committee of the whole. That would be a motion if someone would like.
Mayor, move that we consider the next item, uh, informally as committee of the whole?
Thank you, Mr. Matney. There's a motion to consider informally as committee of the whole, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Reynolds and Ms. Kuzner? Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of considering the next item via the, uh, informal method of committee, all say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, we will consider the item via the informal method. It is open for discussion on project kick. Mr. Matney, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into negotiations with Greenville County and other entities as needed regarding an economic development and contractual matter related. an economic development and contractual matter related to Project Kick.
Yeah, a motion, Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Crayling. Is there any discussion on the motion Mr. Mattney made? No, I'm trying to repeat it. I might ask him to do that. Oh, I got it in print. No other discussion? All those in favor of resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into negotiation with Greenville County and other entities as needed regarding economic development contractual matter related to Project Kick, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, council. We are now back to our second public comment. And this is when basically it's open to the public for anything pertaining to the City of Malden from our citizens or our business owners. We would have asked you also to have signed up for that. No one signed up. So no objection to that. Next item on our agenda would be council concerns. Do I have any? Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, with everything that we've had going on over the past several days, I just wanted to read a text that I got this afternoon. And this is for Mr. Fleeman. Greatest Public Works Department in the state. They got up limbs, trees, stump and roots. This was very much appreciated. This was from a resident near Hamby and Loblawley over at Forrester Woods. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Very appropriate. Any other council concerns? Here none, what's the pleasure of council on adjournment?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Crayling. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, we are adjourned approximately seven fifty-five PM. Thank you for coming out tonight. Be safe going home, please.